A regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. There are agendas on the table near the entrance or online on the city's website. Consent agenda items are routine items which are voted on in one motion and vote. Unfurnished business or new business items are voted on separately. Councillors will be given the opportunity for questions or comments, followed by citizens who must speak at the podium and identify themselves. Citizens will be allowed to speak one time per agenda item for up to three minutes. Citizens who wish to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda will have the opportunity to do so during the public comment section of the agenda for up to three minutes. Kicking us off tonight will be the Pledgeable Agents.
Pledgeable Agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, common, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Any disclosure of conflict of interest on any of the votes that the council will make Seeing none, I will move directly on to the City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor. At the Quarry Road, the contractor is still working on completing the pervious parking area, those are the graded plastic tubes that they'll fill with sandy loam, and you can park on them. And that should be completed this week, and since that work involves heavy loads, paving's been delayed. But the base paving should be done next week, and finished paving will be done in the spring. And the city engineer says the project is still on schedule. The Quarry Road Ski and Skate Swap was delayed due to the construction project but will be held on Saturday, November 17th from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m., and equipment drop-off is Friday from 3:00 to 6:00. At City Hall, the concrete work around the entrance and Castongue Square is about three-quarters done. Unfortunately, it's not clear at this time whether the parking lot can be completed before winter, so the city engineer is looking at the weather forecast and the contractor's schedule before deciding to tear up the parking lot. It is possible that it will be done in the spring; we should know by the next council meeting. And soon, the city clerk will be putting out a notice regarding board and committee openings. There are a dozen city committees and boards, including the new Recreation Advisory Board. If interested, go to the city's website under the Government heading and select Boards and Committees, and there is a Boards and Application, Boards and Committee Application on that section. And city departments will be closed next Tuesday for Veterans Day, November 11th.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Any councillor comments or committee reports? Any councillors have any comments or?
I do.
Councillor Green.
So, just a couple of events coming up that I wanted to let people know about. This Saturday, the Cool Neighborhood Association will be meeting. That is a new group that is just about getting people together and meeting each other and sharing common interests. That's this Saturday, 3:00 at the Lutheran Church on Cool Street, and you do not have to live in the neighborhood to attend. Also, next Wednesday, there will be a public meeting for the Airport Master Plan process, and the public's invited to that. That's at the airport at 5:00. So, keep those opportunities in mind. There's one more, and that's Thursday, November 13th. There will be a community conversation hosted by the Mid-Maine Homeless Shelter and Services. There are two options, 10:00 a.m. in person at the homeless shelter or 6:00 p.m. on Zoom, and this is an opportunity to learn more about the organization, what they do, and join the conversation about how we can contribute to strengthening our community's response to homelessness.
Excellent. Thank you. Councillor Clepack.
Yeah, just, I wanted to revisit the skate and ski swap. Maybe I misheard it, I probably did, but just making sure that it's on the 15th, it's on Saturday the 15th, I heard 17th, but, and.
Yes, 15th.
Yeah, right. So, anybody out there that might be listening, the ski and skate swap is an excellent way to support young people using this incredible facility here in Waterville and learning how to Nordic ski. The proceeds of the ski and skate swap go to support programming for young people, and it's also an opportunity for the young people that are involved to come and buy inexpensive gear. It's a great way for you to unload that gear that's been sitting in your garage for a while and help Waterville youth out. So, if you're listening out there somewhere in Waterville, please support the ski swap on the 15th, or drop off your gear on the 14th. You can either donate it or put it in on commission, and you get, I think, 80% of the proceeds if you put it on commission. Thank you.
Excellent. Anyone else? Councillor Green.
Just to follow up, how does one, is there a time to bring in items to donate?
Yeah, yeah, so, the ideal time is Thursday, no, I'm sorry, Friday afternoon, Friday the 14th, just in the afternoon at the snowmaking shed, just as you, as you drive in, which is also where the ski and skate swap will be. But you can bring in winter gear of all sorts. It doesn't have to be skis or skates exclusively. You can bring whatever kind of winter gear and either donate it or put it on consignment.
Thank you.
Awesome. Anyone else? Councillor Beal.
A while back, I sent out a memo talking about the possibility of getting together as a council workshop to discuss housing and economic development issues. I was asked by Sarah today what I wanted to do with that, and we've got a lot on our plate right now, so this is a, basically a priority issue. So I was hoping that we could bring this up at our city council sessions in January. The Saturday that we have planned for, seemed like it would fit into that agenda, so that's why I haven't brought it forward. So, hopefully we'll have time to discuss it when we go for our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Councillor De Brito.
Okay, so I just want to address, like, the shutdown that's going on right now, and I know I have received a lot of messages about going back to session and having an emergency session. Leadership did have a meeting on Monday. Unfortunately, at this time, we wouldn't be able to go back to session, but the message that we got from leadership is to advise the public that we do have GA, municipalities do have GA, and people are struggling to put food on the table, and it's part of the emergency to please utilize the GA funds from the municipalities.
Excellent. Thank you.
A quick question, do you have any information on how they'd go about finding out information on that?
I guess we have.
You mean on GA?
Yes.
So there's, the GA office is on the first floor of City Hall, and it's an application process based on income and expenses. They've also put out a note on doing an extra food drive. People can drop off food or gift cards at City Hall.
Okay, so the meeting that we have was, we really talked about how to strengthen GA and especially times like this, because this is definitely unprecedented time, and thinking for the future, just in case if we ever have something like this, to really, we're looking at ways of how we're going to be able to strengthen GA and how to make it accessible without going through too many hoops to get to GA. Because right now, we know that people that don't have SNAP are in a crisis right now, they don't have the funds, so those are the people that we're definitely trying to appeal. So definitely utilize the program.
Anything else? Okay. Moving on to public comment, anybody in the public wish to make a comment? Sir?
This is, oh, okay. I'm Scott, I could live in Ward 7, but I'm actually here on behalf of McKennock Meskonski Trails. So, this afternoon, we had an opportunity to meet with Councillor Beal at the Lehman Island Trail, which, as you know, has been kind of a thorn in our side, to the point where we had to take it off the, our trail system. But actually, there's been recent talk about revitalizing this trail and actually getting it back in the system, making it a place where people want to go. So like I said, we met, myself, Peter Garrett, and Councillor Beal met and walked it, walked the island and talked about potential, maybe city partnership, maybe, you know, how to, we can all work together to revitalize this trail, make it something that people want to go. So with that, I'm here to invite if anybody wants to meet, I'm thinking this Saturday at 11:30 at the Hathaway, at the end of the Hathaway parking lot, the beginning of Lehman Island Trail. Peter can't make it, but I will actually lead a tour if anybody wants to come down and see, you know, the trail itself, the potential this trail has of, you know, what this can be. And I have to also give, while I'm here, give a big shout-out to the Southern Neighbor Association, who has kind of taken this trail under their wing and cleaned up this trail. And the last cleanup that we just did, I think we took, I don't even remember, but we took like two or three trailer loads of trash off this trail to make it. And we were down there today, and I think people actually realizing now, because I didn't see much trash. So it's a start. So yeah, like I said, this Saturday, anybody who wants to come down, the Hathaway, at the very end of the Hathaway parking lot, on the right, by the little boat launch, 11:30, come on down, we can do a tour and kind of give, we can give a rough idea of what, you know, as far as Camp Trails has potential for this, you know, this area, what, maybe you guys have some potential thoughts, and, you know, also, because what we're thinking, hopefully, is it's going to be a long, stretched-out, like, four or five-phase plan, but eventually, we're hoping to have one big massive trail from the Riverwalk down through Lehman Island, up the old stairs, down Water Street, all the way down to basically the wastewater treatment plant. So, I mean, you know, it's, it's a long phase, but, you know, at least if we can get Lehman Island going, it'd be start potential, and, you know, hopefully, we can get this, as we call it, you know, basically, you go down there, you see it, this gem that we have in the city, you know, up to maybe a little park, a little place where, you know, people want to go fishing, have a picnic, and, you know, especially now with the Hathaway and the new buildings coming in, it'd be really awesome to have this as well.
Awesome.
And also, I have pictures that I took today, if anybody wants to see after, just gave you a few pictures of what it looks like, and, you know, see me after, we can discuss. But like I said, 11:30, this Saturday, 11:30, you know, city councillors, any city officials that want to come down, you know, the city council want to bring their friends, their kids, you know, please come on down, the more input, the more we have, the better we can make this, you know, treasure another, as we say, an extension of the Riverwalk. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate all the efforts that you, that you do with the, with the, with the trail systems and, you know, incentive and things like that, so I appreciate that, so thank you.
Could I, I was amazed, I'd never actually been down there, and I used to kayak a lot and go fishing from the boat launch point there at the Hathaway Center parking lot, but I'd never walked down further. And, you know, what I would like to see is some discussion on the possibility of expanding the downtown vision plan. You know, we've got this wonderful plan, let's have an addendum to it, I don't know the technical approach that we should use, but the idea is to leverage the river. We've done some tremendous work on the river already, but, but there is a lot more that can be done. And this, this island is, it's across from the Fort Halifax, and, you know, I used to take my kids to Fort Halifax a lot, and I spent a lot of time there when they were young. And we could have something that is a lot more interesting and appropriate for the city on our side of the river as well, and it might be something we want to consider is, do we prioritize this kind of effort and what it can do for the city and, you know, how to proceed? But starting from the downtown vision plan is one possible way of doing that. Thank you.
No, thank you. Did you have something to say? Yeah, no, that's fine. All right, wonderful. Well, thank you very much. With that, I will make a motion, or I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Can I get a roll call?
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Clepack?
Yep.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Krigbaum?
Yes.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
Councillor Harard?
Yes.
Vote of seven in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd also like to entertain a motion to read by title only.
Motion to read by title only.
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Clepack?
Yep.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Krigbaum?
Yes.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
Councillor Harard?
Yes.
Vote of seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to Order 205-2025.
Acceptance of a 2025 Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation Grant.
Move to adopt.
I will move that we read by title only. Did we do that one?
You just did it.
We did, I'm sorry. Okay.
I need a second.
Scratch that.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion on the grant? Yeah.
How much is the grant?
Chief?
I don't know if I remember the number right off the top of my head. It's over $32,000.
That's $32,061.
$32,061. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Patty, can I please get a roll call?
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Clepack?
Yep.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Krigbaum?
Yes.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
Councillor Harard?
Yes.
Vote of seven in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, moving on to Resolution 207-2025.
Authorize the issuance of a liquor license to Jeff Chen doing business as Ming Li Chinese Restaurant.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I, hi.
How are you, sir?
I'm doing well.
Good evening, members. How are you?
Good.
First, I'd like to thank you, Waterville City Office, Patty helping me submit the liquor application. Appreciate it. I wish I can get a liquor license, then I can make a good food for everybody in here in Waterville.
So.
Thank you so much.
I apologize, sir, can you just state your name?
My name is Jeff Chen.
Oh, Mr. Chen.
Thank you.
Good evening. Okay, so, this is usually a, in consent agenda, though, right?
This is a new owner.
Okay.
So with new, transfer of a new license, we have the applicants come and have the council vote on those new licenses.
All right, well, welcome. Thank you very much. You know, Ming Li is, is a, it's an institution here in Waterville, so big shoes to fill, so good luck.
Thank you.
You know, it's good stuff, but, yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir.
I have an important question. Are you keeping the suffering bastard on the menu? Because that is definitely the drink that I like to go to.
I will keep it at the menu, all the stuff, then I will add some good stuff when you like it.
Okay.
When you come over.
Great, thank you very much.
Well, great, well, thank you for being here, thank you for, for taking over, you know, the Ming Li, and any other questions or comments from the council at this point? Patty, can I get a roll call?
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Clepack?
Definitely.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Krigbaum?
Yes.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
Councillor Harard?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right, moving on to Resolution 208-2025.
Thank you, all members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Authorize the issuance of a vitriolist license to Jeff Chen doing business as Ming Li Chinese Restaurant.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion with regard to this? All right, Patty, can I roll call, please?
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Clepack?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Krigbaum?
Yes.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
Councillor Harard?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. If you have any questions along the way, please don't hesitate to give us a call, we'll do our best, you know, in one of our great departments to help you out any way we can.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everybody's. Patty, you're so sweet. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to Ordinance 209-2025.
Amending the Code of Ordinances to change references from the Building and Electrical Code to the Building and Energy Code.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on this? This is just, Dan, do you want to come up, just, just to make sure that we get this right? This is just some adopted language that, it's kind of outdated terminology?
It's essentially a typo. Yeah, I think when they went through and redid the code, they just put in the electrical code instead of the energy code. So the main uniform Building and Energy Code includes the Energy Conservation Code, the electrical code is a very separate, different thing, about electrical installations rather than electrical conservation, so it's just a, it's just a typo.
Okay.
Needs to be fixed.
Fair enough.
And the code company is making that, those changes for no cost because they didn't, they didn't detect that error when they codified the ordinance recently, so.
Gotcha, okay, fair enough. All right. Any other questions or comments from the council? None? Patty, can I get a roll call, please?
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Clepack?
Yep.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Krigbaum?
Yes.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
Councillor Harard?
Yes.
Vote of seven in favor and zero opposed.
Wonderful. All right, thank you very much. Okay, so that moves to, you know, the, I guess, the business, so to speak, of, you know, the voting and things. Next up, we have a couple of discussion items, thought it was a good time with very, very light agenda for us to have an opportunity to have just a couple of conversations with regards to a couple of, a couple of topics. You know, no votes are taken here, it's simply just a discussion to kind of help guide administration as to, you know, what the council would like to see or not see, and draft something up that may come in front of you for a vote in the future. So the first thing was to establish a local board of health. This was something that Councillor De Brito sent out to Cornell, who then forwarded it to myself and Rebecca. We, I know that you had spoken with Cornell about it and got some, you know, some back-and-forths, so we thought this was, be a good time to kind of bring this on, into light, so with that, I will allow you to just kick this off and go from there.
Right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so this pretty much is to establish a local board of health here in Waterville. It pretty much aligns with the recent law that was created by the state about the public health law. So this proposal is pretty much, it's, what it does, it helps collaborate with, like, local stuff that we have already, like social workers, like dealing with mental health, so it's pretty much to collaborate. So it's bringing all these collaborations together and to really be proactive when we're thinking about, like, public health, like, for instance, if we have an outbreak, like, who's going to be able to handle that and who's going to coordinate those services? So, pretty much, yeah, I just put out this proposal and just see if anybody had, like, feedback, so what do you guys think? And, and also, too, on the email, I did include Bucksport, which has a successful model, which they have implemented. So, yeah, so this pretty much would be just to, yeah, to just collaborate and bring public health folks together.
What's the overall, what's the overall goal? What do we want to achieve with this committee?
So, the overall goal of this committee is to coordinate between local departments, health officers, and main CDC. So pretty much, that's the overall goal of this.
Well, I think it's overdue, for sure. I don't know what the current protocol in the city is when there might be a outbreak, how we're meant to liaise with the state. I guess it would go through. I guess it would go through the city manager's office, I suppose, or, I don't know. Yeah, it seems like we need this.
Yeah.
Well, when we have a health complaint, like, you know, some infestation of bugs or something, Dan's called, his office goes to investigates and works with the property owner to resolve. My thought when I saw this is what is the problem that Waterville has that we need this seven-member, or up to seven-member board involved and have the health officer be the staff person? But what's the problem we have that this is going to, going to solve, that we need to have?
I think what, I mean, I don't think we have a problem. I think what we do is we have a lot of silos. We have, we have Main General that's here, we have the EMS service, we have the homeless shelter, and we have a lot of great resources here in Waterville. So what this does, it just brings them all together. It just coordinates them, it brings them all together, and also too, it has an opportunity, opportunity to get grants. So this group would be able to get some grants. There is an opportunity for that as well. And also training. We would be able to get training from CDC. We would be able to be ahead of the game, just in case if something happens.
Quick question for you. There's a reference here to a local health officer as the basically running the committee.
Yes.
Who or what, what is that?
We already have one here in Waterville.
It's right there.
Our code officer.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, Dan, what do you, this is in your plate, then, this whole?
Yeah.
What are your thoughts?
Well, so I'm the health officer, have been for the past eight years, along with the code enforcement director. I thought maybe it would be helpful just to kind of run through quickly what we do right now, just in case there's any, it's not something that's discussed very much, it's not a super popular topic, so. Right now, and, so we, we work with the main CDC, I do, get regular updates from them currently, training offered by them, onsite and webinar training. We, I have two major liaisons with the CDC, the public health liaison and the local health officer coordinator, and she's a medical doctor. They've been great. Anytime I have an issue, question, they're one of the few state departments that answers the phone, you know, they respond. We email, we've met onsite sometimes regarding things, they've been very helpful. Locally, we have a good network with, we have a community outreach coordinator, Todd Stevens, who you all know, community resource officer, Robert Boullet, and an EMS deputy chief, Edward Flannery, and we also have our health and welfare director, Denise Murray. And I've worked with all four of them in this position as LHO for different things. So we have a good, I, I'm not going to speak as to whether or not something like this is merited, but I just want you to know what, what it is that we currently do. Any questions about that?
Yeah. Where, without offering an opinion on whether the board is warranted, where do you either see or perceive that there could be potential gaps?
I really don't see any, to be honest with you, because I'm in, the CDC is, is sending me updates constantly to the tune of several per week about statewide issues. They're very easy to contact, they'll direct me to another state department if something has to be done there. It's rare that that happens. I mean, I've been doing this a while with the resources that we have that are unique to Waterville, with our community outreach coordinator and so forth, so on and so forth. You know, we, I will say that the role of the LHO has drastically changed since I started this job eight years ago. Eight years ago, it was basically, you know, you're the code enforcement officer, you're automatically the LHO, that's how it is in like every town. Then after the pandemic, the expectations changed, the duties changed quite significantly. Just to give you kind of a little quick, but I don't want to bore you to death here, but prior to the pandemic, basically, the powers and duties were report to the commissioner of the CDC, any facts related to communicable diseases, a health emergency report to the CDC, receive and examine the nature of complaints made by members of the public, with the consents of owners, agents, or occupants, enter and inspect and examine any potential health hazards. If unable to enter, need to acquire an inspection warrant and order any correction that needs to be made for any health hazards. If, in a failure of that, we would have that abated and then could recover our costs in a civil action. Post-pandemic, that, some things were added to that. The things that were added were connecting residents with public health services, enforcing public health safety laws that include the following: exclusion of students from school, control of brown-tailed moths, removal of a private nuisance or nuisance of a dead animal, establishment of temporary healthcare facilities, prohibited dumping, which is something that I already deal with as code enforcement officer. So those are the major things that have been added now. In theory, those are a few things. In practice, they're pretty varied. And I think it's a good, good example of that is some of the training topics that the CDC has given us. Keep in mind, I'm a building inspector, I am a code enforcement officer. So over the past year, some of the specific training topics and documentations and things, expectations that they want from us, and provided us information on our bird flu, tics and tick-borne illnesses, adult protective services, animal control and welfare, Narcan training, hospital incident command system, West Nile virus, tips to prevent getting rabies from bats, healthy eating, active living, tobacco, cybersecurity, I can go on and on, rip currents, recommendations for syphilis treatment, I mean, you know, it just goes on and on. So as a result of this and this drastic change, I did a little research, I've been wanting to kind of propose for the past couple of years, maybe having, because it's not a full-time position, but maybe getting somebody, I mean, it's clearly, at least it's clear to me that this position should be fulfilled by somebody with a background in healthcare as a local health officer, because the expectations of changes have changed, society's changed, so much has changed. So it's just never been the right time to sort of introduce that into the budget. But now, I was hoping to do it this year. Kennebec County has 33 local health officers. Out of those, 19 are not code enforcement officers. That's 56% that are not code enforcement officers, and when they are, it's usually in a smaller community that doesn't have the population that we have, the building stock, the building quantity that we have, the, or that, quite frankly, the development that we have. Right now, my office has 212 open building permits, that's $154 million in ongoing construction happening right now. We do three apartment building inspections per week, and the follow-up for compliance on these, which some of these buildings are wildly out of code and take a lot to get put back into code. We've closed 211 property maintenance ordinance violations so far this year, and we have over 9,000 pages of evolving regulations, building regulations, land use laws, and ordinances that we need to know and enforce. So my fear, whether or not this happens, I don't think I'm the guy to do it. I guess it's a long way of me saying I don't think I'm the guy to do it. I don't think I have the time to do it, quite frankly, and I don't think I am the person to do it. I think it should be someone with more healthcare experience. I've spoken to some other people, communities that do this on a per diem, I mean, not on a, on a stipend basis, part-time, they do it for various towns, it's been successful. Usually, the people in the towns that do this, they're, you know, medical doctors, nurse practitioners, PAs, or retired doctors, nurse practitioners, PA, what have you, people with some kind of background. Maybe they want to get out of the full-time thing, but they still want to contribute and they still want to do something part-time. I think that there are people out there that could do this better than me, if it's something that happens, just to be frank. Don't want to throw myself under the bus.
You can be Dan, you know, but, you know, as you list all of these things, you know, and thank you for being the point person now, and I appreciate it, but, you know, when I take a look at this, you know, and I jump to our website, right, and again, this is, this is where communications, right, like, you know, comes into, I don't see, open the department's page, I don't, I don't see anything that jumps out at me as like, here's where you go for Waterville Public Health, or these, you know, these things that you're being talking about, hey, we're seeing an uptick in, you know, tick-borne illnesses here, you know, whatever, or, you know, there's been an uptake of, whatever, whatever it is, you know, so I, I think, you know, in the spirit of, you know, what Counsel DeBrito is talking about, is that we have some of this stuff here now, it doesn't seem to be very, it's not a, to you, organized or, you know, publicly communicated, which I think it certainly could be. So, yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a lot here, you know, and it's, it's one of those things that I don't think that you think about it until, you know, you, you have to, right? Like, I mean, the pandemic kind of taught us that. I think this is a very, now's the time to be very proactive with this versus the next time we're in a situation where we need to now bring all of these people that, you know, that she had mentioned, you know, together. Does it have to be monthly? Probably not, but if we get a group of people that want to serve and provide information that we then can, you know, upload or, you know, things, I'm thinking, you know, some from Main General or, you know, like, wherever, the CDC, things of that nature, like, that would be, you know, pretty good, so.
So we, I do get stats from the CDC. If you want them posted on the website, that's something that we can, we certainly do. There's never been, they have their own things that they do, that they post, and they publicize on their own, and the county does as well. But if you want, if that's something that you want, that's certainly something that we could do.
I mean, personally, I don't think I follow either of them, like, but I follow Waterville, right? Like, and, I mean, again, social media is one piece of, you know, and website is one piece, so I don't think that you could ever get the same message out.
Sure.
Enough, you know, so.
Sure.
Counsel Green?
Yeah, thank you. I, the job description does sound lengthy.
Yeah.
So I have two questions. One is, how, how did, how did, what happened during the pandemic as far as alerting you and, and the community?
During the pandemic?
Yeah.
When it was actually going on, the CDC took total control of that.
Yeah, okay.
We, because it was a statewide, well, worldwide.
Worldwide, yeah.
Thing.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, we had very little, we didn't need to, it was publicized, and we really didn't do it.
Right.
We weren't told to do it. I haven't received any, typically, they would contact me and say, you know, publicize this. We've never received any directive, or I've never received any directive to publicize anything, any outbreak of anything locally.
Okay, I'm just thinking back to when the pandemic happened, I wasn't on the council then, but, you know, there was a sudden decision to close, close down Main Street, for instance. You know, and I'm just wondering, should we have an event like this in the future? Would, would this help with that coordination? I'm guessing it would. Hopefully, we don't see a pandemic for another, at least, 100 years. But, and my other question is, how are you working now with the other city staff that you mentioned, the outreach coordinator, the deputy fire chief, et cetera?
Yep. So Todd and Rob, we have all of our cell phone numbers. If they come across or see a situation, they contact me. If they, you know, if there's a sanitation issue or any kind of health concern, of course, the public also contacts me. I contact them when I think there may be a mental health component involved and they need to be directed to services. We work, we've met people together on site many times. We've worked together on many different occasions and different situations and scenarios. Same thing with our health and welfare department. If there's a situation where a person, the living conditions are just not safe, sanitary, and there's no way to quickly clean it up, then we'll work with health and welfare to get them temporary housing until that can be fixed. We have had health issues abated, the city has cleaned things up and, and then tried to recover those costs in civil actions when necessary. Those are the three major ones. Deputy Chief Flannery is good for me to just lean on when I have a question about a facility, where a person maybe should go, where I, what I can recommend, or he's just, he's right in the same building as me. So if I want to bend his ear about Powassan virus, you know, or something like that, he's a smart guy, so he's, he's good in that regard. We have a good, I think we have a good network. It is, I guess you could say, it's a loose network, but we all know who to contact, we all know our roles, and we, we do work together.
So I guess my, my thoughts are that, you know, when you, you also mentioned the temporary, I'm not sure exactly what I wrote down, facilities for housing, I think? You know, I guess it, it does occur to me that we have a number of issues that, that the cities tried to respond to in the past, for instance, creating a warming shelter, and it's been difficult to find volunteers and to coordinate the training. I mean, I, I think that the coordination and collaboration aspect of this is the most valuable for us. When I, I went on the website for the Bucksport, I looked at Bucksport and Bangor, they both have a public health board, but it seems to be connected to outside organizations, right? Like, it's a, it's a separate thing, and it incorporates aging in place, hospitals, and, and, you know, resources around tobacco and substance use and other, other things that are folded into, you know, what this is about.
All very important things, yeah.
Right? So, so I am wondering if we could look at, you know, this as a way of strengthening the resources we do have, as Counsel DeBrito said, and perhaps even there is some funding that we could use through our opioid fund for this, if needed? But anyway, those are my thoughts.
Yeah.
At this point.
Counsel Klepak?
Thank you, first off, Dan, for just keeping the city together.
Well, I wouldn't go that far.
Well, you definitely keep parts of it together. I appreciate everything you do, particularly after you explained these other aspects of your life that I didn't appreciate before. I have a number of questions, so, and there's a couple different points that are here. There's the, the question that was originally, the discussion topic here, is whether there's a, a board is warranted, and at first blush, I, I was in support of it, and I perhaps still am, but after listening to you and thinking about it a little bit more, I, I want to make sure, and also to the city manager's point, like, is, what are the potential gaps and the advantages? One of the advantages that was pointed out is that this entity One of the advantages that was pointed out is that this entity can write and receive grants. Is, does having a health board make us, make certain grants available to us that would not be available to us otherwise? That's a question I don't know. And then, if that were the case, who would be writing the grants? That's not usually something that, but we can rely on in terms of volunteer. But, so, the potential benefits of the board is that, how does that balance against, you know, you just listed this litany of things that you have to do, that you feel are a little bit outside of your bailiwick. Does, would having a board, what kind of administrative burden does this put on in terms of time demands, in terms of juice per squeeze? What would we be getting out of this in terms of what we'd be losing? And, you know, putting another responsibility on people without explicitly putting in another, you know, more personnel in the city, right? So...
I just want to clarify, it's an advisory. It's just an advisory. So this is just people volunteering their time. It's just a, it's just an advisory board, it's not...
Yeah, yeah, I understand. But it would be bringing Dan onto that board as the role that he's currently in. He already is maxed out. And so he, his point here was, well, his plate is full and that actually, you know, bringing us in line with many other communities and the existential reality that he is in, we actually need another personnel to be able to do that. So to this other point then, that Brad Street's raising, you know, if we were to devote some amount of money, is there precedent for, you know, he gave a couple examples of like a retiree or a partial employment with a person who's trying to transition careers or something. Is there other models with partnership with other communities, like Oakland and Fairfield, where a position could be split and supported? Or through one of these other community partners, like KB, could KB Cog or something like that facilitate some sort of, like, shared position? That's something that occurs to me. Then where would that person live in the tree? Is this someone that goes over to Frost's house over there? Or does it direct report to the city manager? Where's the right place for a person like that?
Council Green?
Yeah, so, so Healthy Northern Kennebec is an organization that's been active in Waterville. It's, I believe, a subsidiary of the hospital. And they do a lot of this anyway. I'm wondering if it's, it would be possible, if this could actually be an opportunity, that we designate someone to be our LHO, who's not a city employee, but would work with city staff? And that would reduce the burden on our staff, if we could find someone who's willing to serve in that capacity?
That's kind of what I was envisioning.
Yeah, okay.
You know, not somebody who has an office in any city building, but maybe somebody who works for a few municipalities doing this close by.
Right, because we have, we have, we have a liaison in the fire department, who's our medical director, right? Dr. Pei?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, maybe that's a model for a similar sort of...
And that is a model that I've seen other municipalities use. The larger, usually the larger ones, yeah. The smaller ones, you know, where the code officers aren't so busy, you know, obviously, the population is lower. The health officer role doesn't really get a lot of attention because it's not needed, but they just, they have more of the time to deal with it. We're a growing city, and it's, it's, doesn't seem to be slowing down.
Absolutely. And I think it would be just great to confirm that we could appoint someone who's not the city staff.
In that, I would have, we would have to look at the law that was passed. But, yeah.
Yeah, I think, so by statute, every town has to have an LHO.
Right.
And the recent statute that you're referring to, I don't think changes any of that. It doesn't have to be a full-time position. They just have to have an LHO. And this new statute, I mean, it does provide a rough framework. You're able to use this to the letter or to modify it. I don't know how that affects the funding side of it or grants. That part, I'm not sure.
I think as long as we just, my understanding of it was, as long as we have the advisory board and we have, like, different people from like the public health, the nurses, the social workers, and like community members really coming together, pretty much that's what we're looking for. And to your point, the reason why the state was asking, is asking municipalities to do this is because of what happened in 2020 with the pandemic. So this would definitely put us ahead of the game. It would definitely put us out there. If there's any grants that we can collaborate with CDC, they would be able to, they would be able to really guide us.
And whoever, you know, this person may be, I would certainly work with them as the code officer. I mean, I'm kind of the enforcement arm. The LHO doesn't have a ton of enforcement authority, anyway. That's kind of why it was put in with the code enforcement office back in the day, kind of lumped together. But, yeah, I mean, to your point, that makes sense.
So I'd like to propose that we explore this model of having, having a board that involves another partner, a health professional.
I can reach out, I can do some research if it's okay with everybody to get some more information, you know, see what kind of interest there is, what perceived costs may be somewhere in there. I haven't dug into it. I have, of course, kind of dipped my toe in, but I haven't really dove in because I didn't think we were at a place in previous budget seasons where we were looking into this. But if this is something that we're thinking of doing now, maybe a good time. I don't believe it's a very large financial burden to most municipalities, in my understanding.
Yeah, and so, like, for me, the reason why I really brought it up is to really put public safety up front. We're dealing with a lot going on right now with healthcare and everything. And really putting public safety up front is the responsibility of a municipality. So that's the reason why I really was passionate about this and really about bringing it up front. It's first to really put it up front.
Another point, maybe you can speculate on this. So you're, Dan, you're one of the people in the city whose time, like, directly translates into revenue for the city. So by liberating yourself from some of the responsibilities of the LHO, can you estimate whether, whatever costs that might, the city might incur for putting in place personnel in one partnership model or another to do that, how would that liberate or expand your capacity in your other role? And how, you know, you know what I'm saying? Like, is, would it actually pay for itself a little bit? Or am I thinking about it incorrectly?
I don't know. I mean, when things need to get done, we get them done. You know what I mean? There's nothing that doesn't get done because there's too much on the plate. And ultimately, we'll expedite things, reviews of projects and things like that. Maybe allow us to get to inspections a little quicker. Yeah, that could happen. Whether there's an actual real cost savings in that? I don't think so for the city. But, you know, people don't usually walk away from a project because it might take an extra day for me to review it, you know? I don't see it being any cost savings involved. But it will, it will help my sanity. It will help my mental health. Yeah, we're a busy office. There's a lot going on. There's a lot asked of us. We're yanked into a lot of different directions. I mean, 200, over 200 open permits, you know, trying to keep track of it all. 150 million bucks in construction right now. I mean, we really are the ones that are responsible for inspecting it all and reviewing it all, you know, from start to finish. From, you know, can this thing even happen at this location? To everything from when they first put in their erosion control to when they put their last coat of paint on. I mean, that's where, we're there for the whole thing. That's just after the project starts. There's a whole other thing that happens before. And with our apartment inspections, I don't want to go on and on and on about it, but, or, you know, say, poor me, but there is a lot. It's a lot. But I've been doing it a while now, so I'm kind of used to it. And it will definitely help ease the burden a bit. And I, but that's not to say that if this new position occurs, I wouldn't work with them. I certainly would. As, you know, I see that being another person that I would work with that could report to me, I could report to them, we could work together. It's another tool in the toolbox.
Just for a point of reference, the LHO hat that you wear now, what's the time commitment right now, given what? Like, just for a month, like, on average? Like, what would you say, like, per month, what your average is?
It totally varies. It could be nothing. It could be things that are kind of, most of it's training. Most of it's doing webinars and things like that, to be honest with you. But otherwise, I mean, it's the report of, you know, bedbugs, mold, trash, you know, things like that that I would deal with anyway as a code enforcement officer.
But I mean, aside from the code enforcement piece, right? Because you, like, for you, it is a little bit of a blurred line, right? Like, because if, you know, there's, obviously, you would go, you know, from a code enforcement perspective for, you know, a report of bedbugs. But that's also falls under the umbrella of, you know, this local health officer. So, like, aside from those things, like, so webinars and things like that, like, what would you estimate the amount of time? And you have to answer that now.
Yeah, I mean, I've been doing them both.
Like, I mean, think about it, like, shoot us an email and just kind of, just, a frame of reference as we're looking and when we're saying, okay, well, you know, if we're going to look to put a position on the books, how many hours, how many hours are you, are you spending doing X, Y, and Z? What does that look like? What's the minimum? What's the maximum? You know, we can certainly, you know, take a look at that. So if we have an idea as to the types of things that you do with, to fill that particular hat, you know, that would be helpful?
That makes sense. I mean, it's hard for me to answer because I've been doing them both the whole time I've been here. So the two are not mutually, they just blend together for me. But, yeah, I'll dig into some records and get you a rough estimate.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Dan? Anyone want to hear anything from anyone else? I know the fire chief's here. I know, like I said, there's a, when you talk, there's a lot of blurred lines with this. So, you know, like, where it sits and who, you know, touches this in different points of, you know, conception? Like, the initial news to in the middle of an outbreak? I know, like, during the pandemic, there was, you know, we had the room up above the fire department, and, you know, Chief Essler was in there and, you know, it was Massey at the time, you know, police chief. You know, you guys were in there, city manager, things like that. We're just talking about, you know, this is the communication. These are reporting the numbers. Everybody was, you know, that was the hub. So...
Yeah, that was just... Emergency Management Director, is that you?
EMA, whatever.
So the city has an emergency management director, the fire chief. At the time, it was Chief Essler. He kind of coordinated all of that.
Right.
It's, I mean, it was really like 2021, I want to say, when things really started, after, you know, really, once the pandemic sort of started to die down, the pandemic itself. And, you know, this list of topics for training that I had, it's just a small piece of it. All things, important things, no question. But I'm at this training sometimes, and I'm just wondering, you know, what am I doing here? Like, I'm not the guy that should be here doing this, you know? I mean, just to be honest. And I think that a lot of other towns are coming to that same conclusion. And that's why you've got more and more of them that are getting healthcare professionals, people with that background that are taking on the position. And to your point, it's important. It's important, it is. But I know my limitations.
Yeah, all right. Awesome. Well, thank you, sir. I appreciate the insight and background and what we're doing now. And, yeah. All right, so for, I guess, the council in this conversation, what do we want to, what do we want to see? I think that we should definitely flush some things out.
Well, Dan and staff can contact area towns and see what LHO setups they have, their capacity, how much they spend. So we have an idea whether there's a possibility of sharing a stipend or per diem-type LHO. And we can also work on a charge, if that's what the council wants, on setting up a committee, and then just come back for more discussion at another meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I, okay. I mean, Flavie, there's something you brought up. You know, I'm certainly happy to, you know, to sit in on some of these conversations, kind of help, you know, massage what this may or may not look like. I don't know if that's something that you're interested in, Flavie, is, you know, to kind of take what you have, take what we've got now, and see how we can put it together and sift it out into something to bring, I guess. It's up to you.
I mean, that sounds good. Well, because what I heard today is that we do have a code enforcement, and it seems like he's, he has a lot on his plate. And definitely, we need an L, I mean, yeah, we need a help. It feels like we do need a help board.
Okay. Council Bill?
What I heard is that we need to consider supplementing the Mr. Brad Street with a LHO. But if we're going to do that, then we should have a local health, a board of health as well. It seems like they should go together. If we're going to invest however much in a LHO dedicated position, however that is, that it should be part of a board of health approach.
Yeah, I agree. It seems, it's pretty clear that it's kind of absurd that we have to have one person who's an expert on syphilis and GFCI outlets all in the same human being. I mean, that's, I'm all for Renaissance man, but that's kind of ridiculous. And so, you know, given that premise, why wouldn't we take that person and, yeah, give them a structure, an entity to work with? You know, one of the things that, you know, maybe it could be built into the stipend, or I don't know what, but, you know, how does this entity write the grants that it can now receive or whatever? Maybe we could think more expansively about the role. That person could perhaps be a person with some of that kind of skill as well? I don't know.
Thinking like ways to, like, how do we do, like, needle pickups and stuff like that? Like, even, like, little things like that, that comes to my mind and is like, how do we do that in the city? Like, how do we coordinate to do stuff like that? And I feel like this would definitely help with stuff like that.
Yeah, I mean, to my mind, this is an echo of the conversation we had about a year ago when the proposal of the task force came up. And we were looking for ways to, you know, support healthier behavior and do some public relations around various things. I mean, I think that, again, we, I think we have a lot of resources in the community. And I agree with Council de Brito that they're a little bit siloed. I mean, not entirely, but this is an opportunity to strengthen what we have, which I think, right now, is something that we should always be thinking about. So I again, I would encourage us to look to, you know, particularly healthy Northern Kennebec. I mean, it's there are bound to be people there who are already working on similar issues, who who do have medical expertise and can really, you know, complement what we have in our on our city staff already.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. All right. Well, next, we'll move into the other discussion item is, well, it says creating a fire EMS fire slash EMS department study committee. You know, we we had one before when we we started, you know, the ambulances. And we talked about a multitude of different things. It wasn't simply just ambulances. We did talk about cost recovery and billing entities and various other things. I know we spoke about the fire alarm and fire alarm upgrades and and things of that nature. So there was a there was a bunch of things that that, you know, this this committee did, you know, during that time. You know, we've had a lot of discussion about the, you know, the state of EMS and healthcare in general over the last, you know, year. And, you know, I know it came up in our in our last meeting when we revisited the addition the staff about, you know, bringing this back. I I had spoke with the chief and chief, I'll welcome you up here this this conversation. Like, that's fine at this point. Like, come on up. You know, about creating or recreating, you know, a a committee to kind of talk about this, right? Because this is going to be a a topic of conversation as we move forward, you know, here in the city. It's going to be a budget conversation. It's going to be, you know, a a conversation about. I I don't think we're ever not going to have this conversation, you know, at this level. So I thought it would be a good to have this this discussion here tonight to kind of, you know, gauge the, you know, the the interest of the council and and working to putting something together to kind of review this and and the stability of of EMS, you know, for Waterville. You know, I know there's been a lot of talk about, you know, regionalization. You know, certainly that path will cross. It's really not the goal of, in my mind, the goal of of this particular is to explore how Waterville can get into regionalization. But, you know, when we talk about why is our call volume so high, like and and kind of, you know, doing some deep dives into that, doing some deep dives into, you know, our current billing practices, into other efficiencies that we might be able to 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 see, other eyes, you know, on the on the topic and and suggestions that we can, you know, vet out as a as a group. And, you know, if there's council action that's needed, you know, certainly have serve as an advisory to the council, you know, certainly some counselors, some in my my vision is, you know, a couple of counselors, some residents, you know, the fire department staff. And, you know, really just kind of taking a look at this holistically, you know, and and whatnot. So that's kind of where I'll I'll start, you know, this conversation. So Counsel Bill.
I I would like to see an addition to this activity where we extend an invite to all the fire chiefs, the adjacent cities or their representatives, as well as Delta ambulance, that it's not. It seems to me that what we we need to do is look for efficiencies. But I don't think we can fight them all just within our city. We need to look at regional efficiencies. So I don't even know if that's in the possible thing, but they might be interested in 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 supporting this kind of activity.
I I just have a quick thing. You know, I I get the fact of creating the EMS department study. That's fine. Obviously, everyone knows that, you know, there's there's issues with healthcare, et cetera, et cetera. I think any type of opportunity to be transparent with the with the hardworking taxpayers of Waterville is important. You know, I understand everyone loves to bounce the word regionalization around. That's not Waterville's problem. We should be focusing on Watervilleans. We should be focusing on the Waterville Fire Department. And we should be worrying about people within our city. And that's it. You know, if if everyone wants to branch out to 1,000 miles away, that's fine. But no, we need to we need to focus whatever happens here. I'm all for the transparency, but we need to focus on Waterville, Waterville Fire Department, and the men and women that work there.
Counsel Kibak.
Do we have a draft of the charge that this committee would have?
We don't. You know, and this is but this is to get the, you know, the the conversation going, right? Like, and we can come up with a draft.
So, I mean, the constituents of the committee are going to be dictated by that charge, right? So without knowing exactly what we want the committee to do, it's hard to say whether, you know, Ward Six or Ward One is correct here in that.
Well, these are the proposals on the table we've got. I hope that we get some more proposals about what to do.
Counsel Green.
So I'm I'm just curious, Counsel Gilli, what you mean by transparency.
I think that, you know, depending on who's on this committee, I mean, I imagine it's not going to be the seven of us, or it's not going to be or or it might be one or two or whomever. But I would imagine that there's going to be some some people in the in the community, I would assume, that it'd be somebody from the from the community on this, whether it be somebody in a healthcare role or a a hardworking taxpayer or somebody else, I think would be appropriate, just to to see to see what what problems we could solve. So, yeah, that's that's what I meant.
OK. I just a quick follow up. I I mean, to me, this committee would be focused on the next budget and and how it is that we can deliver the service that we need to deliver within our means.
That would be fantastic.
A question. So what is the difference between this committee and the task force? Because in the task force group, we are pretty much doing stuff like this. The public health, the LHO was also discussed at the task force. And that's one of actually create a little bit of momentum for me to bring it to the council. We two bills, we put the GA bill that came out of the task force, proposed that to the legislative and also to the task force, we did the treaty in place. So I'm I'm trying to understand, like, what is the difference between this committee and what we do right now in the task force? Because we are discussing some of these topics. Or is it going to be specifically to just the budget? Because if it's just the budget, I get it. So, yeah.
I I think it would be great to hear from the task force again, because we haven't heard from them in a while. I didn't, you know, I know we spoke on the phone and I I didn't realize that there were bills that were being brought as a result. So it would be good to have a report from the task force and and hear what's going on there. I I do I do see them as different because the task force, as as it was envisioned, had to do with public safety generally and not specifically efficiencies in the fire department or, you know, the particular stresses. Although, you know, obviously, they're related because one of the reasons the task force was created was because of the high call volume, both in police and fire. So maybe, but, you know, it would be good to have a report from the task force, I think.
That that I'm glad you just said that, right? So if I may.
You may.
So I got to speaking with Chief Bonney about this sort of thing also, a call volumes, size of the departments and size of the city. And and we he brought up some very enlightening numbers, which I think if if we want to sit and talk about the fire department, I think that's that's wonderful and I'll be part of that. But I think we need to look at all city services as a whole for the city of Waterville. That's my personal opinion, because if you look at like just Chief Bonney's department, in retrospect, Lewiston runs 1,000 calls a month in their police department. We run 950 calls a month in our police department. They have 80-something uniformed officers. We have 30-something uniformed officers. So you can see that we're kind of the city in general is just in a hole. We're growing fast, in my in my opinion. And if you talk, look at what Dan's putting out there for and what we have coming into the city with new housing, some some big infrastructure coming in and all that stuff. I think a good a good look at this would be where is this city headed and how are we going to provide services as a whole, as a city, not just fire department, but the police department, public works, the school system? We all have to somehow grow with it sustainably. And where do we head in the future? You know, do we want the city to grow at the pace that it is? Because when you look at, like, especially what Dan just said, but when I look at what my deputy chief is putting in for reviews every month, and you see the list is growing and growing, it's kind of astonishing, the amount of development that we have in our city. And that development brings people and then they live here and they work here. And that increases everything, increases call volumes, increases kids coming to our school, increases people that are on the roads, that public work needs to take care of in parks and rec. And it's not and I again, if we want to have a committee on the fire department, that's great and I'll be part of it. But do we even have a larger thing that looks at the scale of what we're doing as a city and where we're headed, right? Because that is my biggest fear for our city is these people that come and work, play, and live in the city, they require services. And how do we continue to grow with the growth? That would just make two cents.
I thank you for saying that. I actually agree with you completely. I think that absolutely there needs to be more of a conversation as to where not only the city is hurtling, but where we would like it to be and how can we be more rational about about guiding ourselves to that point? One, you know, in terms of maybe illuminating a little bit the where the gap might be, we know that fire EMS and and the police often end up, you know, filling in for gaps in other social services in terms of 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 their calls. When you look at Lewiston, for example, and those those numbers that you just gave, 1,000 with 80 officers, their population is what is what is Lewiston? Lewiston's probably about.
35.
What's that, 35? Yeah, that's what I thought, right? So, you know, does that mean that they are two or three times healthier or less, you know, less beleaguered by crime than we are? Are there other social service services there that are filling that gap that actually, rather than thinking about the the police or fire, we need to be thinking, as you suggest, more holistically and what other ancillary services could we be providing that take the burden off of or at least open up some reserve capacity in these, you know, frontline departments so that we can they can be able to deal with whatever growth is coming without necessarily adding significant, you know, investment in directly into those departments? Like, what what can we take off of their plate that maybe doesn't belong on their plate? And that does seem like something that a study committee that has an expanded scope might be able to to think about.
Yeah, I I that's kind of that's probably better said than what I was saying, I guess. But I under I that was that is what I was thinking about, too. Like, you know, and and to the to the mayor's point, you know, maybe that looks at why are why are we so busy and what what can we do to help offset that type of busyness that we have? I don't know the answers to that. I'm I'm just throwing ideas out there.
I mean, the other way to look at this is that we could hire more people in these departments if we had a higher tax base, right?
I yes, I don't disagree. Yeah.
So so that is another piece of it. I mean, we're growing in terms of numbers and visitors, but are we growing in terms of our tax base?
I have a question for you, Chief.
I'll try to answer.
So I got a question. So all the things that you said, like you're talking about, like, where do we see Waterville going into the future? Is those conversations that we would be able to have into the task force and looking at those numbers? Because right now, we're looking at the homeless shelter, we're looking at how many the population of unhoused population and the call volume and the police department also call volume there. Is that something that we can incorporate into that? Or do you believe that we do need something separate?
I don't know if that was the task of our of our task force that we were put together. If you look at what we were given for directives, I don't think.
Are we talking about the impact task force?
The impact task force, yeah. I mean, that wasn't part of our scope that we were started with.
No. Right now, we're working more on, you know, we recently had the Director of the Housing Authority and Housing First programs. And we'll be going down that avenue at the next probably two meetings. But I'm not sure what the mayor's proposal for a fire EMS committee doesn't seem like it would fit into what the task force does.
Yeah, I mean, we've been more focused on the unhoused and how to help with that situation, which is its own beast right now that we've been trying to look at and come up with solutions and ideas. I think that it would kind of pull us away from where we've kind of been headed at this point in time, which I I do believe is in a good spot and we're headed in the right direction. But I think adding more to that might might split us off and not get us to our end goal right now.
OK. I appreciate that. Thank you.
So, you know, across the council, is there are there thoughts about whether, given what we've been talking about, whether this proposal for a narrowly focused fire EMS study committee is the correct structure? Or do we need to be asking questions that would have perhaps a more expansive a more expansive title in charge?
Maybe they're one in the same. I I don't know.
Yeah.
Honestly, I think it's a mix of the both, kind of. It depends on the situation, because if we're taking this fire EMS specifically for the budget season that is upcoming, that seems its own dedicated role if we decide that that's what we want to do. I think a very focused approach is the correct thing. But this other task force that we were discussing of overarching kind of where is Waterville heading? What is the big problem? How are they all related? And what the holistic view of all these issues? Waterville definitely is its own entity that absolutely should exist. I just don't know if that is what is in front of us right now. And so I think that might be something that we should look at implementing down the line or perhaps on a different meeting's agenda. But I think this right here, I would prefer if this was the budget centric view of this.
That makes sense. It clarifies it for me. Thank you. I like that idea.
Anyone have anything else to add to this? I think there's, I mean, I think there's enough here for us to kind of work with administration to kind of put together a formal, more formal document for you all to review and to add or subtract scope, you know, at a at a future date. So if that's OK, we will move forward and and work to draft that up and present that to you at another time.
So so this would be a committee to focus on the fire department and the budget? Is that what I heard?
Yeah, how to pay for the fire department.
OK.
You know, look at, I mean, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, that's that's what I'm. You know, look at, I mean, yeah, I mean, yeah, that's what I'm taking away is to, you know, as we will take a look at the, I guess, the trends and the rising costs of, you know, fire EMS, and just, you know, put it out there on the table and let's have the discussion and, you know, have some subsequent, you know, data as we go and review, you know, budgets and things of that nature, so.
I would just, you know, before we walk away from this, just to reiterate the point that I had made, that when thinking about that, I think the committee should be thinking outside of the box too, in terms of what is it that EMS is doing, what are the, what's the actual content of what it's doing, and does the structure that we have currently, should they be doing all those things, or are there other structures that we could be using? You know, just thinking about where we're putting our resources for best effect.
Well, I'm going to question that a little bit. I am, I have the, my assumption is that the chief is doing a good job. He's managing his resources well, he's responding to call volumes, and he's doing what he's good at. But, you know, so I don't think having a committee to look in detail at what they do and how they do it is, I don't think they're going to find much. I think we need to, like you said, outside the box, but what does that mean?
Well, what I was referring to, when I was saying that, was simply question, I do not in any way doubt that the chief is the consummate professional and is doing his job extremely well, but my, I guess the point that I'm making is, are they going on runs that would be better served by sending a social worker out to the site or something like that? And, not that he's not fully capable of sending a team out there in those circumstances, but is that the best use of his resource that he is obligated to be delivering, because we don't have other infrastructure in place to, you know, be completing the task?
Are we talking about sending social workers out to, like, EMS and 911 calls? Is that what we're talking about here?
I don't know, because I'm not on, we haven't done the study committee, I'm asking the question. Like, what is the...
Well, I'm here to tell you, when I got in my motorcycle crash and I was, you know, I couldn't walk, I'm pretty, I was pretty pumped that an ambulance showed up and not a social worker.
Okay.
That's not what that recommends.
But that's not what I'm talking about.
Yeah, that's...
I think if you look at the types of calls that the department is fielding, a lot of them do have to do with elderly people falling or, you know, being...
Lift assists.
Or just, yeah, I mean, things that perhaps, you know, we could look at, how we respond to...
I don't know.
We've had specific, we've had specific examples given to us of this previously. For example, there has been multiple times where, if I remember correctly, paramedics have shown up to assist somebody because their medication had run out, their PCP is gone, Inland left, they don't know what to do, they need their blood pressure meds or what have you, and they don't know what to do. That is extra resources we're sending when we send an ambulance out for somebody who could just get a refill from someone else that has the capacity to do that. So, this isn't saying, let's not send paramedics to a place that they are needed, but if somebody calls and says, hey, I don't know what to do, I don't know how to refill my medicine, Inland's gone, I don't have a PCP, we don't need to send a full wagon out to go help them, instead, we can send somebody else. And so, like, this part of this committee is looking at those cases and seeing what an alternative is.
Well, that's why we also have department heads, and we have a fire chief, and we have a deputy EMS chief as well, to make those calls. We don't need a committee to say that somebody needs their prescriptions refilled.
I agree with you, but at the same time, those individuals are also very busy, and having outside people, especially in the medical field potentially in this committee, to look at this and say, hey, I've seen this elsewhere, you know, Nebraska or something is doing this weird initiative that it's actually working, is something that's outside the purview of most of our department head, but other people can dedicate time to looking at those things.
Yeah, I think that, you know, all of this is speculation, right? This is, we're sitting here hoping that some sort of study committee is going to be able to clarify, because we don't have the data, there's not been, you know, this is all anecdotal, we're just going off, and the only person who actually knows what's going on is the chief, right?
And I really think that this really complements us putting four new staff onto the fire department, because now, coming up next year, we may want to fully staff it with eight. How does that look like? For me, I see this committee as an opportunity to take a look at that and see, can we afford this of not, okay, how can we use other resources to kind of fill in the gap? But I do see this as an opportunity, I really do. I see this as a great opportunity to really strengthen and be transparent, because when we do come to budget season and we want to put, add on four new staff to the fire department, we can justify it. The reason is because this committee has looked into this, and this is what we got out of it, not just coming out of the fire department. So, I really do see a benefit to this.
I just want to go on, and I don't know that that's how you meant that, but I do believe that Chief Frost has been, was transparent throughout the budget process. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, but you know...
The way that sounded is not the way that I think you intended it, so I apologize. I just wanted to clarify.
No, no. Just to clarify, it's, you know, when you hear from the public, and you hear it on the newspaper, oh, you know, the city councils and the chief is not being transparent, we don't need extra help, we don't need extra four people, or we don't need an ambulance. When I say transparent, it's about, like, the residents being involved in the process.
Correct, yeah. Council Hradin.
Yeah, I, yeah, first and foremost, I think Chief Frost does a phenomenal job, but I also think that he's recognized there are, you know, some gaps where, you know, maybe a study like this would be super helpful, right, in finding either creative ways or, you know, answering some of these questions that have puzzled him and his department and the entire city. Rather than just making it about scrutinizing the budget, you know, I would really prefer a holistic approach to seeing, you know, where these calls are coming from, why they're, you know, they're coming in, you know, the way they are, because they're not going to stop, so regardless, we have to remind ourselves of that, you know, that that's what we have to be addressing here, is the call volume we are receiving and the fact that it's going to continue the same, if not probably rise. So, you know, that's just kind of my thought on it, and, yeah, I mean, I think this, it's a great idea, first and foremost, that we can have different, you know, you know, people at the table that have different perspectives, like, you know, that might have ideas, that would be helpful.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. All right, any final comments before we wrap this one up? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you.
Thank you.